Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting of February 26, 2020. As always, we start every meeting to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. It's also being broadcast for use at a later date if needed. I apologize for being a few minutes over. We had a little discussion about something from facilities. And so I apologize for being a few minutes late. I have it cleared up as of now. So also, if you're planning on speaking tonight, please get up and state your name and address and what town you're from and wait to be recognized so everyone can have their turn. Okay. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, an under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Also, I'm going to jump around a little bit tonight because we have several people here. And for the sake of getting some people in and out, we're going to hear the auditor's report momentarily. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of January 15, 2020.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion.
If we could make a motion to amend. I'm looking at page one. Towards the bottom, it says each student commented on their support for the current times. I'd like it to be amended to read that three of the five students commented. I didn't hear from all five.
I have a motion to amend the minutes of the 15th of January to read all students replied, and now to read three of the five students present.
Commented.
Dawn, three of the five students that were present?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Was there more?
I have a motion, the second. All those in favor?
Do you have the second?
I thought I heard.
What are we voting on?
Voting on amending the minutes of the 15th of January.
Superintendent's report. It's page one, about four sentences from the bottom. Each student, I don't believe each student spoke. There were five. Three of the five spoke.
I think that's why, I'm sorry. Don't lose me. To read three of the five?
Do we know that three out of the five spoke, or you think?
No, I watched the video back. Yes. Annika, Chloe, and Caitlin spoke on behalf of that. We didn't hear from Marissa or Chloe. Marissa or Jordan.
Jordan, I'll see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you read it back, Michelle, what you want to read?
Yeah, I'm to amend. Each student commented two, amended two, three of the five students commented. Anything else, Dawn, on that particular sentence?
They stated that there was a struggle and it was hard to get up early, but eventually. No? Okay.
Okay. So we're adding to the amendment? I'm a little.
She can say what she has to say.
You would like the rest of that, right?
Yes.
So it's going to read, three of the five students present spoke?
Yeah, and stated current start time was hard at first, but can be a struggle, but found beneficial for them. That's what you would like to do.
Dawn's making the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Fred?
I mean, I don't remember verbatim how many spoke, who spoke, et cetera. From what I remember, everyone seemed to all be in agreement that, you know, they put the latest start time, or the earliest start time, rather. I don't remember who spoke or how many verbatim.
Chris?
I'm with Fred. I honestly don't recall, but my recollection was that it was generally, there wasn't a lot of debate. It seemed like folks were fine with it. So I don't know, maybe, maybe if it's acceptable, we all go back and watch it and build the minutes next time, we can certainly see what was said.
Or.
Go ahead, Fred.
I mean, I would be amiable to say that some of the students spoke, because I don't know the exact number, and the general consensus was they were fine with the start time as it is.
But if we're documenting.
The amendment is three of the five, so go ahead, Dawn.
Right, if we're documenting, I watched the video today. Three spoke, two did not speak. So the comment in the minutes right now says each student commented, and they did not. So I just am asking it to be amended that three of the five commented.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. So the amendment is three of the five students spoke. Okay.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? I do recall three of the five of them speaking, and a couple of them didn't say anything personally. I don't know what they all said, so I'm a little bit. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, now we need to vote to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in, discussion? All those in favor? Okay. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of February 5, 2020.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion. Dawn?
I would like to amend page six. The fourth paragraph. It currently reads, Mrs. Byers stated the committee should consider how much the towns can afford when prioritizing budget items. My statement was to be careful when we talk about the two towns and what they can afford. It comes down to priorities and not to confuse the two things.
I'm trying to find it.
Page six, oh, the second.
I got you.
I got you. You second page six.
Yes.
Not to confuse the two things. What they can afford depends on what choices are made in order to fund and prioritize different things.
Michelle, can you read the amendment?
This part is going to be careful when we talk about the two towns and what they can afford. So comes the priorities, so be careful not to confuse the two things. What they can afford depends on what choices are made in order to fund and prioritize different things.
The motion, looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion. Fred?
I pretty much, I don't recall exact exact, but I pretty much remember the discussion being pretty much what the minutes state. I don't remember every single word exactly, but, you know, the minutes are supposed to be a general consensus.
But it's misrepresenting my statement at that time.
Any further discussion? I would just say that the recorder, if we want to go back and look, we can, but if Dawn's taking the time to do that.
She wrote it, yeah. Watch it.
She needs to have the record corrected. Why not?
They're her words.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Is Michelle read back? Did you get the vote?
Yes, I don't remember. I don't feel I can properly vote.
Ian?
Right.
Okay. We have an abstention.
Motion to amend.
Motion's good.
Good.
Motion to accept the minutes as amended. Second?
Second. Sorry.
Discussion. All those in favor? Student advisory report. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello again, and thank you for having me. This weekend, Whitman Hansen's high-frequency show choir will be attending their first competition of the year. Saturday morning, they will be driving to Windsor Locks, Connecticut, to show off the show they've put so much hard work into. Student council is currently working with best buddies to plan an inclusion week in late March. Also, a few of the members are attending MAS C, or Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, March 4 through March 6. MAS C is the state conference where about 1,200 kids attend. Unfortunately enough, my fellow peer and friend, Tori Long, and I, she used to be in the spot, we received the ability to host slash present a workshop. We're very excited about it. The entire group came back from Australia this past Saturday. Everyone enjoyed the beautiful trip to such a faraway country and are so thankful to have gotten the opportunity to travel there and work with EF Tours. Robotics club is currently working on their first large fundraiser. They will be running a robotics camp for middle schoolers. The students will learn basic coding, the fundamentals of robotics engineering, and teamwork when building a robot. The entire school is abuzz with the upcoming primaries. Thanks to social studies honor society, a bunch of kids have registered and pre-registered to vote. Boys and girls basketball and the boys hockey team both made the MIAA playoffs. They are in the midst of their playoff games, and the boys hockey team just won their game last night. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions for our student advisor? I was at the hockey game. It was quite a game, eight to two.
Yeah.
They move on from there?
Yes.
And the girls are playing tonight as we speak. I'm waiting to get text on the score.
Yeah.
And the boys are playing tomorrow night here at Whitman Hansen at 6:30.
This is very exciting.
It's all good. Do we have any questions?
Thank you again for having me.
No. Oh, God. Girls hockey, no, I mean, girls hockey.
Girls hockey's also in the tournament, too.
Yeah, girls hockey made the tournament also.
Boys hockey plays Friday, Saturday at 3 o'clock in Situate, next round, and girls are down by a point right now at the half. I'll keep you updated.
Live streaming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Great job. Superintendent's report. Jeff, the job posting's going to take any time, or can we go to the auditors?
I think we go to the auditors because I want to have a little discussion.
Okay. We would love to have the auditors come up and give us their report.
Thank you for having me. I'm Jennifer Cook, and I'm with Clifton Larson Allen. You should have in front of you a presentation. I do apologize, you do not have the financials as they are in draft format right now. So within the presentation, I do refer to page numbers, so if there's additional questions as you review the draft or anything that you need us to elaborate on more as you get more detailed into that, I can, I can provide that. So I just wanted to, on page, starting on page three, just to give you the terms of the engagement, what we were engaged to do and what we were required to report to you. So we're required to express an opinion on the financial statements, so they're presented in accordance with GAAP, express an in relation opinion on the statement of federal expenditures, and to provide an opinion on the compliance and internal controls over federal award programs, as well as internal controls over financial reporting. In addition, we do provide a management letter based on if we find anything, based on our audit procedures, we are required to report those as well. So page five is the open items. Right now, management's concluding their review. I met with them last week. We will be sending them the representation letter to issue this report, and then we will be submitting the data collection form to the federal clearinghouse, which is your federal money reporting to the government. And let me know if I need to speak louder, I know I'm soft spoken.
If you could speak just a little louder and tell us if there are any type of irregularities also.
Yep. So I will get, so the executive summary on page six, we gave the draft financials on February 7. We did issue another draft on Friday based on management's comment, so we anticipate giving them the representation letter tomorrow, and we should be issuing early next week. We do anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion, which is consistent with prior years. And I did want to draw attention, in the opinion, you will see a restatement footnote. And last year, you would have seen something similar for the implementation of GASB 75, which brought on the full OPEB liability. This year, there was a change in the measurement date, which resulted in a restatement. I'll get into it a little bit further, but I just wanted to draw that's going to be when you look at the opinion, it's going to stand out. On page seven, we did not find any internal control deficiencies, both on the financial reporting side as well as on the federal major programs. We did audit one major program, and that's the special education cluster. We do have two informational management letter comments, which I'll get into later, and that's for upcoming GASB standards that the district will be required to implement. On page eight, this is just a high-level summary of your statement of net position and your net investment in capital assets. Is that 54 million? There's approximately 500,000 in restricted net position. And then what's going to stand out is your unrestricted deficit, which is 103 million. And what I broke down here is it's directly related to OPEB and pension, which I think is consistent with what we reported to you in the past. On your governmental funds, again, I put the page number for when you do get the financials, if you ever, if you want to refer back. There is one new major fund this year, which was for the Hanson Middle School HVAC project, and the technology for Hanson remains another major fund. You will see that both of them are reporting large deficits, and that's because of the bands and the way they're reported in governmental funds. So because they don't get recognized as revenue in that report, you're going to show everything you spend is going to show up as a deficit. So that will be cleared once those, those bands are expired.
So that's basically going to wash its way out as it moves forward.
Correct. And I believe, I think we spoke that technology should clear out next year.
Okay.
And then there is, I put a reference to note two about additional fund deficits. There were approximately 80,000 of additional deficits that when we, sometimes it's a lot to do with timing differences of receipts and expenditures, and they did clear those deficits in early fiscal year 2020.
Anyone has any questions? Do not hesitate to stop or.
I know you don't have the financials in front of you, so it's like you can't really refer to the pages. The one thing I did want to draw attention to on page 10 was the general fund fund balance. And as it relates to the remaining unassigned balance and E and D that's, you know, being depleted over the years, you can see, you know, in 2018, 450,000 was committed to the 19 budget. This year, it's up another 25%, so 561,000 is used. And you could see unassigned fund balance went from 994 to 604,000. So we're not replenishing at the rate that we're utilizing. I think it's a key metric to look at as you're evaluating. Everyone's topic, favorite topic is OPEB. So footnote 10 relates to OPEB, and as I mentioned, the restatement is approximately 2.5 million to restate the beginning net position to bring the measurement date from June 30, 18, in the prior year. Sorry, it was measured a year behind last year, and now it's measured at the, at the end of the fiscal year. The reason was under, for your OPEB trust, which is reported in your fiduciary funds, you are required to report the liability as of that date. However, the district itself can report it a year behind. So when you're reading through the footnotes, it's, it's very confusing because a liability on one page is a different number than it is later on. So you'll see a lot of districts and towns are doing this change in measurement date to have conformity between the two reporting. As you can see, the liability is at 97 million at the end of June 30. And that is up, I want to say, 9 million from the prior year, and that is mainly driven from changes in assumptions, and that relates to your discount rate. As you can see on page 12, the discount rate in the prior year was 3.5%, and this year it's 3%. What's driving it is everything, it's a blended rate between what your investment rate return is and what the municipal bond rate is. So based on the, the value that you have in your trust, it's blended with what you should be earning on your investment. And as that number grows or the municipal bond rate changes, it's drastically changing your liability. And that's where I wanted to draw attention. You can see the sensitivity disclosures. Right now, you know, if it was 1% higher, your liability would go from 97 million to 84 million. But if it was 1% lower, it jumps up to 114 million. So these liabilities are very highly contingent on the assumptions that are in this report.
Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that everybody, everyone, we're going to get an OPEB report in a minute, but can you explain what OPEB really means in the long term? Because there's probably some people watching that don't understand these particular numbers, and they talk about liabilities in the $90 million range.
Right. This is other, OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. So essentially, your health insurance, life insurance, dental, everything outside of your pension that is being, is a benefit you're getting from the district. And this is the projection for the existing retirees and then the future earnings on active employees that will be receiving it once they retire. So that's, that's what the basis of this liability is. And that brings to note 11, or note 13 on the next page, which is the pension side of it. So these liabilities go kind of hand in hand, and pension was implemented several years ago, and then OPEB kind of got brought on this year. Similar to pension, this is, this is, we saw an increase this year again because of the change in the discount rate. If there's, it's basically the same kind of requirements, and you can see I put the sensitivity disclosure as well on that. I don't want to drone too much on the pension and OPEB, but I want to open up for questions if anybody had anything.
Anyone have any questions before we move along?
The next is our D A O report, which is our, our report on internal controls over financial reporting. As I mentioned earlier, we did not have any findings that were related to material weakness or significant deficiency. And no findings related to compliance with laws and regulations. The, yep.
I have a hard time hearing you.
Okay, so, and no findings related to laws and regulations. So on the OMB report, which is the federal awards, in 2019, you had $2.2 million of expenses, just consistent with the prior year, and we audited the special education cluster, and there was no findings reported related to compliance or internal controls over that program. The last is the management letter. So there is GASB 84, which is the fiduciary activities. And I met with management last week, and this is really going to change your fiduciary fund statements and the presentation of agency funds. And I think our biggest focus is student activity funds and how that's going to be presented next, starting next year, and getting ahead of what that presentation and anything the district needs to do. The lease accounting and financial reporting is GASB 87. That's in a few years, that's not next year, but that's going to change all the leases. Essentially, they're saying it's very rare that a lease is going to be an operating lease, so what it's going to essentially do is bring capital leases, assets and liabilities onto the books. So I did talk to management about getting, accumulating what those leases look like and determining what the impact will be when this standard is implemented. That is all I had, and I apologize again that you don't have the full financials, but I wanted to open up for questions.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Barb.
Just one quick one back on the general fund on page 10.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation as to what should be in that? Because I know you'd said that we're spending more than we're putting into it. Is there a recommendation or anything that we?
I would say, you know, on the budgeting, it's a, it's a very tight budgeting. I think what we're seeing is a lot of budgeting is leaving that room so that you're building up the reserves.
Yep.
And right now, because your budgeting is so tight that it's not allowing the district to accumulate those reserves for these, these future appropriations.
So in the short term, noted what you just said, it's stunting the growth of it by not budgeting enough money to make it grow.
Yeah. Yep.
Is there a recommendation on like percentage of budget that it should be or anything like that?
Sorry.
Like a percentage of the budget that should be like 1% of the budget, 5% of the budget?
I can go find what we're, I don't off the top of my head what percentage of the budget that E and D should be at, but I think having an internal policy of what you want it to be would probably help in the budget.
Okay.
Good, Fred.
I know if it helps, DESI regulations limit you to 5%. Okay. Thank you.
Clifton Allen and Larson is an independent auditing firm, correct? And you do other schools?
Correct.
And we do this, I just want the general public to know why we do this, and we do this yearly?
Right. And you were required to have this audit, and the federal program, you were required to have that audit as well, to report to the federal government that you're in compliance with those regulations as well.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could do the district treasures report and the OPEB update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Leary. It's good to see you.
Nice to see you. I'm going to speak very briefly about the district's finances for the year. Schools district maintains a strong debt position. The principal balance due on the school building, which is the only long-term debt you have, is now down to $4,170,000. And we have maintained a double A bond rating through Standard and Poor's. Each year, they review it and they continually reaffirm the double A rating. We have a couple of short-term notes that I believe the auditor mentioned. One was for 115,500. It's still outstanding for technology, and we just borrowed half a million dollars for a short-term project. Short-term note for the HVAC project at one of the schools. Fiscal 19 investment income was budgeted at $50,000. We actually hit $107,500 in revenue for the year, so all that money over and above the $50,000 is available for budgeting. And in 2018, we had moved some scholarship money into a more aggressive, but still very conservative, investment policy, and we've done pretty well with that, getting investment income for the four or five scholarships during my custodial care. And that's all I have. Anybody has any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Leary? Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Kate for the.
We're going to hear from OPEB?
Good evening. My name is Kate Canny. I am a representative of Public Agency Retirement Services, and with me tonight is Treasurer Thomas O'Brien of Plymouth County. And together, we represent the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Program. So the booklet you have in front of you is our annual review booklet, and I'm just going to kind of point out some quick highlights. I won't be going page by page. So Whitman Hansen Regional School District adopted our trust program in the fall of 2015 and have been actively participating in the program since then. Our program is a full-service OPEB trust program. It's a multiple employer trust program. This is that we provide the full administrative aspect of the trust plus custodial and investment advisories. The program is managed by an investment committee that works with the dedicated portfolio manager. The investment committee consists of the chair, who is Treasurer O'Brien, and then four duly elected members. These are representatives from the member units of the trust, of which you are one. And you're, you started funding your OPEB trust in the fall of 2016 with an initial contribution of $100,000. You have made subsequent contributions totaling $175,000 total. You've requested no disbursements from your program. Your total all-in expenses for the entire participation in the program has been $1,138, and your earnings have been $52,042. So you're, as of January 31, your account balance is $225,903. You're participating in a growth portfolio, which means that it's more equity than fixed income, and it's about a 75-25 growth portfolio. Our three-month returns are 3.8%. Our one-year returns were 13.45%. And our three-year returns, and this is annualized returns, have been 10.75%. As you'll see on the bottom of slide six, the benefit of participating in a multiple employer trust program is that assets are pooled together for investment purposes only. You do not share liabilities or earnings, but that has been able to result in a lowering of fees. When you joined the program, you were paying 52 basis points, and now, as of last month, the fee all-in is 40 basis points. So as the program is growing, assets are increasing, membership is growing, we're able to pass that savings on to you in the form of savings of fees so that your assets stay where they should be, which is in the trust and being held for the beneficiaries. So that's pretty much a highlight of our program. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Can you explain to the people watching?
Mm-hmm.
Why we contribute to OPEB as far as offsetting our OPEB balances?
So as the auditor spoke before, you have an OPEB unfunded liability of about $97 million. Under GASB 45 statement that came out in 2006, they began to recommend funding your OPEB assets, and that would be to set aside funds and assets to begin to offset the liability. Some agencies are more fully funded, but more agencies are at the beginning of funding. And the idea is that with the investment earnings, you're able to use those earnings to put towards the cost of the retired healthcare so that it isn't strictly a pay-as-you-go.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question. Just looking at the asset allocation, the international equity at 23%, do you anticipate seeing a, a loss in funds there with what's going on overseas right now in like China and everything with the epidemic and?
So as, I am not the investment manager, so I can just report that we are here, we have been in communications with US Bank, which is our investment manager, and they did release a statement on the coronavirus. They may be seeing some short-term market corrections. As of today, they said some of the important things to watch for is, one, the extent and length of the, the illness, the coronavirus impact. Also, market volatility may be based on fear of investment, and then inability for markets to react short-term, so that it may have a negative impact on travel or industry, but early, it's early days. They do anticipate it could be 0.15% of a loss in overall economics worldwide. But the important thing to think about when you're looking at an OPEB trust, and it's, and I'm unfortunately not in my 20s anymore, but I should have been thinking about this when I started thinking about my 401K, is this is a 30-year investment program, so the rate of return of what we expect is about 7%. We've been returning above that, and the idea is that we're trying to capture market highs, which we've experienced, very high markets since 2016, in preparation for some dips, which could potentially be returns about 5% or 6% this year as opposed to what we've been experiencing in the double digits. Thank you.
John?
So just to repeat the numbers, so we have a liability of $97 million, and we have an asset we've contributed to for $225,000.
Yes.
Okay. And June of FY '20, we didn't contribute anything.
You have not yet, not to date, no.
Right. And just to ask, in our budget, I don't think we have a placeholder for any contribution right now, right?
That is correct.
We'll do it at the end of the year.
No placeholder right now. Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Back to the superintendent.
So we have a couple of job postings. One is for the Director of Business and Finance. Although we love John, he's itching to retire again. He's been a huge asset for us upstairs. But we did post on Monday for Director of Business and Finance, and we're looking for a school committee member from each community to serve on a committee. The committee will be chaired by Mr. Farrow. I'm looking for two school committee members, two members of each community, FinCom or Selectmen or Town Administrator.
One each.
One each from the committee, from, from the community. So I'll send something out. We'll have a principal on it, and we'll have members of the business office on this committee. My hope is to have a candidate or two or three to interview in front of the school committee before April vacation. That's my hope. We posted, we've had three applicants so far. The pool is, is less than a puddle, so we are really engaging our resources of people we know to have folks come out and, and have a conversation with us. But that's our goal, to, to bring a candidate forward before April vacation, or at least by May, so that we can have an appointment from the committee and get that person on board with, while John's still here, at least a little bit of, of communication to set us forth for the summer.
The, the goal would be, we'd paper screen, the committee would interview who they feel they interviewed, then that would be moved on to a second set of interviews. Jeff would be on that one, so would John, and then to present to yourselves for the full board. The timeframe, the time commitment we're looking at, we're looking at probably two days. I don't know if they'd be at nights, I don't know if they'd be later afternoon. I'm just being honest with you at this stage, I'm really not sure.
So you're looking for one committee?
A member from Hanson.
Each town.
Correct. And then we'll, we'll send it out to the town administrators to get their boards, so we get members from each community to serve.
One from each there, too.
Do I have a community, Fred?
I'll do it.
Anyone else from Whitman?
If Fred can't, I will.
If Fred can't, you can do it?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Hanson?
Do I do it?
Any one of you three?
I'd like to, but I'm crushed at work right now.
I'll do it.
So George will email that out. We'll set, the goal is to start paper screening March 20th, right around there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We also posted for the position of Indian Head Principal, we'll be forming a committee of parents and teachers and, and staff members to, to, we'll paper screen again and bring those candidates to that committee again. By April vacation, I'd like to have an appointment and bring that person forward. There is a candidate pool out there. Indian Head, we, we, they've had some flux in leadership over the past few years. We're looking for somebody solid that the committee likes and that we know that can take the reins of, of that school so that the chilt, the kids can have a consistent leader through their stay. And I know that's been a challenge, so that would be our goal. We're going to solicit some information from staff and from some parents about qualities of what they're looking for, and then try to get that ideal candidate before break again.
Thank you.
Just one thing, I, maybe it's not the time or the place for it, but Mr. Tuffey, can you clone yourself? Just in the past few days, and again, you know, you answering some questions, I just got to say, the professionalism, the ability to get answers, et cetera, I just very much appreciate it. And if you can't find a way to clone yourself, I think it's all part of us.
Thank you very much.
We feel the same way, Fred. Thanks for saying that. John, do you have, do you want to move past the expenditures and revenue line items?
We'll do, we'll take that up, I think, at, at the next school committee meeting. The next school committee meeting, I will give you a year-to-date report that ends in the end of February, so the month of February. And then, there are some line item transfers we need to do, and frankly, these last few weeks, we've been preoccupied with putting a budget together and some other things, so we'll, we'll take that up with the next school committee.
Want to move past this?
Yes, please.
John, you know, retirement's overrated.
It feels a bit like I'm at my own wake. I want to thank you very much, I do appreciate it, but I mean, it is a great group of people to work with. Everybody in the office has been nothing but gracious and helpful. You've got a good group of people here, so I'm somewhat envious of whoever gets to come here and, and take over.
Then why put an end to something good?
That's what we keep saying. We're not there yet. So thank you. The next item is budget discussion in your packet. John put together a history from 2018 to 2021 proposed budget, line by line item. You'll see where we've been, you'll see where we're at. I'm still, as far as what we recommended at our last meeting, is still what we're proposing here as far as the required budget. I asked the committee to, to marinate over this required slash recommend and have your say, give me feedback on what you would like to see. I haven't, I know in both communities, there's still conversations around the numbers of what they are. I believe at our next school committee meeting, we will be certifying at least a number to the, to the towns as far as what their assessment will be, based upon the numbers we have here, and then we can move, move from there in the, in the pro or the negative. But the required piece is to keep us really at status quo, level service for FY '21. There are other items in that recommended piece that are up for discussion, discussion that I don't know about finances in, in both communities. We, I have yet to, and I'm more than willing to have a conversation with, with Hanson FinCom before the 11th, before we certify, or after that if need be. So I look forward to that, but I'm looking for information or, or what you've, questions you have from your constituents around the budget, what they like, what they don't like, what they'd like to see. We try to be as fiscally equitable as possible. I know we have, there's, there's really some difficult conversations still being made around the assessment methodology, still having people grab, wrap their head around what the difference is between agreement method and statutory method, the whole way we presented budget last year as far as an assessment number, and this year, we are looking at a straight percentage increase of our budget. Right now, the total required was a 4.94% increase to the 2020 budget. If the committee would like us to move backward or forward, I'm looking for a whole number that I can then adjust. So there isn't a, a percentage from that old chart. If you're saying the towns can only afford this number, it'll be a 500, and I'm just picking a $500,000 decrease in the FY 20, uh, 21 budget, we will then go into what we have and remove $500,000 worth of items. That's what I'm, I'm looking for from the committee. If the committee says, we'd like you to add $500,000, we will add and we'll take from the recommended area and add those pieces to the FY '21 budget.
As you, as I, as you may know, some of you have called me and asked for this document. This document was handed out this evening. They've been working on it. So if you want to do it right now, line by line, or you'd like to take it, look at it and see what your recommendations are, and we will do it at the next meeting, that's completely up to the committee. I know it's a lot of numbers to take and look at when you just got it handed to you as a supplement to your packet. But as John said, he works two days a week, and it's been, it's not plugging the numbers in immediately, so.
And as far as that goes, Bob, this will be on the website tomorrow. Just wanted the commit, the committee to see it first, because I know that was a comment made last year. We didn't present the line by line last year, so historically, we went from 18, 19, 20, accurate 20, and for 21, and that's, that will be online. You will notice some different line items, because, you know, in 18, we had a McQuan school, and we were moving people around. We still moved some people around last year. But this is, is, will be on the website tomorrow under the, the budget page.
Yes, Fred.
And I think it's important that we go school by school, line by line, you know, and especially to keep the public cognizant of the fact that, for instance, Indian Head elementary teacher salary from 19, from 18 to 19 went up quite a bit, but they also assumed quite a few more students with the absorption of the McQuan School, you know, so that we have the justifications for that. I hate to say it, it feels like it's another year of treading water for us, that we can't move ahead, you know, that there is going to be budgetary constraints, and I don't know that there's a dollar amount that you can put on it as far as, you know, what is the deepest we could go to be able to offer a level service of budget?
Excuse me.
And the proper education. I can't see us going backwards anymore. I mean, we've gone backwards far enough, long enough, and especially last year was, you know, quite hit hard, so to speak. You know, so I don't know if we want to do this tonight, and I mean, I think it's going to take a long endeavor, Mr. Hayes. You know, to sit, maybe we need to schedule a separate meeting and do nothing but go through everything line by line and see, you know, hey, even if there's 50 cents that we could save, you know, and whatever number we can come out with.
Would, yeah, would it be your pleasure to wait and have a meeting next week after everybody has absorbed this budget and the, the changes? A week from today? Does that work for everyone?
I will not be, I won't be here, but have it, have it anyway, but I definitely won't be here. Then I won't be able to phone in, but that's okay. I'm away in business for the fire department, so. But by all means, have it.
Chris?
I'd definitely like to look at it first, because I think it's going to be inefficient to just.
Yeah.
Go through it line by line now, but I do have a broader comment, but I'll save that for when we're done with this question.
Mike? Good?
Yeah.
Meaning?
I think we, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, probably. Do you?
Should be able to.
Pardon me?
I should be able to.
Fred?
Wednesday, I should be able to make.
Works. Ally?
Next Wednesday. Three in a row.
I can probably, I guess I have my daughter, but I can probably get my mother and I'll take her, so I can make it work.
John?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll let this be discussed and have a meeting a week from today?
And then we have a meeting on the 11th also, correct?
Yes. We, we've got quite a bit going on, Judge, so we, we've got to.
Hey, my, my nights are free.
We've got to get it going. Anyone else from the committee?
I'm sorry, do, are we going to do it at 7?
Yes.
Okay.
Does 7 work okay for everyone?
Can I recommend, even though I'm not going to be here, invite the Selectmen and FinComs from both towns, just let them know, but that's the one thing we're going to discuss.
Yeah, and that's all we're going to do.
Yeah.
Is the budget. Cheryl, can you send a letter to both FinComs and both select parties?
TA's as well.
Yeah, Town Administrators, whoever.
Yeah. Administrators.
Yep.
Anyone else from the committee? Me.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I'm Kathleen Otina, 344 Washington Street in Whitman. I am a member of the Whitman Finance Committee, but I'm actually speaking as a concerned grandmother tonight. I'm concerned about the class sizes at both the Duval and in 1 grade, the Indian Head, where the class sizes exceed 22. And it, it had to happen this year. You really didn't have any opportunity to think, how else can we save money to come in under budget? But when you start these discussions, I would really urge you to take a look at the discrepancy between a class size of 19 for first and second graders in two schools and 24, 25, 26 at the Duval School. It's really an inequity, and if there is any priority that I would urge you to consider, it would be the earliest or the youngest children in the school system coming in need much more one-on-one attention and should be a higher priority than maybe some of the other items. And I understand you have total control over the expenditures of your bottom line, but I would urge you to consider that as a top priority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Don?
We're still on budget discussion.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add comment, because I was appointed to a committee in the Town of Whitman Budget Override Evaluation Committee. It was formed last spring and summer, and that committee spent a long time and a lot of work on recommendations. So as part of that committee, the recommendation for funding education was a 5% assessment increase to the Town of Whitman. I want to communicate it to my fellow committee members in case you weren't aware of that. The budget put forth by the superintendent and those required pieces translated to a 4% assessment increase to the Town of Whitman. So if we're to look at that number, and, and believe me, I'm sensitive to the statutory method and how it is affecting Hanson as well. But I look at the impact to Whitman in a sense that if we go with even that 4% number, what does FY '22 look like moving ahead the next year? And if statutory method is used for FY '22, it would be about a 1.3 million assessment to Whitman. So it, it's a big increase for the following year. If we're looking at everything the same, you know, just looking at it same, you know, budget increase, state aid where it is. So what I'm asking is to consider the recommendations of Mr. Madden, that he came, spent time with Whitman, with that committee, recommending 5% assessment increase to the Town of Whitman. It translates to additional funding of about $228,000 in the Whitman Article II operating line item. Whitman spent a lot of time with a survey also, asking about overrides, what their committee, what their residents felt about an override. This was done about 18 months ago. 62% of the residents responded that they'd be willing to, you know, say yes to some type of override. So I'm, just wanted to share that information.
Okay. Thank you. Fred?
And, you know, and I know Whitman has a quote-unquote. And, you know, and I know Whitman has a quote-unquote target number that's been discussed, as far as what they can afford on an annual basis in the increase of education. The only thing I don't know is how do you increase one town's assessment without increasing the other town? And especially in a year where the other town is, I mean, there's struggles, and they're still trying to figure out struggles. You know, how do we, you know, we have to be cognizant and sensitive and see what the heck we can try and figure out, and then until...
All right, but I think as superintendent said, I don't know if you've heard from Hanson FinCom at all, Jeff?
No, yeah.
Chris?
So I've been thinking about this whole broad budget cycle discussion for a while. And I think the most challenging part is that I'm not sure I really feel like we're doing what we said we need to do in terms of moving education forward. And I think a large part of that, and I'm going to stay on the topic of budget, so give me a little latitude, I'll... I think if we look at some of the issues we have specifically with the assessment and what that means financially, this budget cycle is a small reflection of what is going to be an ongoing annual problem, because it is a significant swing. And as I said in previous meetings, I don't know how I can support a budget, but as a over a $1 million swing to Hanson, it's a very big, big issue, especially when that's in conflict with the agreement that we made. And so when we look at how the district was formed, it was formed under a partnership. There was a partnership between the Town of Hanson and the Town of Whitman, and we all know the history, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but that was on a per pupil cost. That's how, that was the basis for the formation of the district. And we know that the state changed the laws, regulations, so that the statutory method could be used. But I went back and watched the video with the representative from Destiny, Christine Lynch, and she was very clear, when she spoke to us on behalf of the state, that this body should absolutely understand the ramifications of that change to both towns before it made that decision. She also very clearly said and recommended, she wrote the example of a five-year phased approach for that assessment methodology, not an immediate, not like two months after she spoke, five years. It's a long time, and the reason that's irrelevant is this gives the other town an opportunity to actually absorb it. It's a massive swing. So I'm struggling with the consideration, respectfully, from the folks on the Whitman side, as to the impact on Hanson. I mean, we can go talk to FinCom, but I can tell you what they're going to say. There isn't a million, they didn't earmark 1.2, 1.3 million dollars in additional capital to be spent on a switching of the assessment method. It just, it's not there. And just because the state said that we could make the change, doesn't mean it was right to make the change, right? I was always taught, I was raised with, honor your commitments. If you make a commitment, you stick by your commitment. The commitment that was made in that original agreement between the two towns was very clear as to how this was going to go. And just because the state gave us the opportunity to make the change, that doesn't mean it's right to take the change, and it doesn't mean it's right to take the change in one full year. So to me, it's really about the partnership. Are we going to have a partnership or not? And as it comes back to this budget discussion, look, both towns are in tough shape. I've sat here year after year and spoke to, we need to do more. As it pertains to the budget, I think this year, at best case, we're looking at level services. Best case.
That is best case.
Best case. But I also am urging the members of this committee to really think about and consider how that assessment methodology and applying it all in one year opposed to a compromise is going to affect this entire budget cycle, not only for this year, but for the years to come. That's my piece.
Anyone else before I go to Mrs. Kement?
I think that was perfectly said, Mr. Howard, and I'm not going to add anything to it, but I do think that in a year...
Laura Kement, address town, some of the people are not going to know, Laura.
Laura Kement, Chair of the Hanson Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
And while there are things that one can do, it doesn't always mean that one should do them. Nevertheless, here we are, and we are really trying in Hanson to keep this partnership going. We've been meeting with a couple of folks from the Board of Selectmen. We've asked you to put the regional agreement back on the docket for tonight, so that we can open those discussions up again. And you haven't heard from the FinCom, because frankly, we need a number to respond to. And Don, you've been able to think about in an override committee since last summer, how this might impact Whitman. We're going to need a minute. We haven't had since last summer to be thinking about the ramifications of an override to our town. So it's going to be a minute, and we're working on it, in good faith, all of us in Hanson are working on it. So I understand that you haven't heard from FinCom. They don't really have anything to say to you until we have a number that we can respond to. I don't want you to mistake that for us not being behind the scenes, trying to really figure out what we're going to be able to pull out of a hat here. Because if we don't, despite what some have said, which I don't believe to be true, and our attorneys do not believe to be true, the state will step in. And I assure you, although people have tried to say that that isn't the boogeyman, and we don't need to be worried about it, that is not what our attorney's telling us, it's not what selectmen that I've spoken to in Dayton and Rehoboth are telling me. They're telling me that home values have deteriorated, that new families will hesitate to move to town because they get a very strong signal that the schools aren't being supported. And I don't want to be responsible for that. I don't, I'm really trying hard to take a position of leadership in the town, hoping that karma heads can prevail. We've had quite a volley sent our way, so it's going to take a minute. And I echo your sentiments, I'm certainly not going to tell this group what to do, but I would suggest that you'd be tone deaf not to appreciate that in a year like this, to expect that you're going to get much more than level funding is probably just not going to happen. And again, in this case, I'm speaking for myself, because we haven't taken a vote. But I can tell you that anecdotally, and as we've talked about it in our various open meetings at the Board of Selectmen, and what I'm hearing from constituents, they really don't even want an override. So to take it to a level that's beyond what, you know, is, and would need an override to even do level funding if the statutory method is used. So to take it beyond that is just simply not going to be anything that we would be able to support as a partner. And when I talk about a partnership, I'm not just talking about Hanson and Whitman being a partner, it's the three groups together, the school committee, Hanson and Whitman, acting as a partnership. And to me, a partnership is a sensitivity to what the others are going through and trying to modify your behaviors. And if your end goal is truly to move forward the educational programs in these two towns, I would urge you not to try to do it all in one year, because it's actually going to boomerang, and you're going to end up having people digging in and saying they won't get a dime more from us for years to come. I really would urge you to really rethink that strategy. That said, I'm hoping, I know you've got regional agreement on the docket, and I stand ready, once you, you know, are going to form that and all that, we'll take it back to our committee, and we'll get volunteers and get that open. You know, we've reached a place with Whitman where we feel pretty comfortable that if you guys are able to come with a reasonable number, we'll be able to work together with you guys as a partner. Don't want to talk hard numbers yet, because we're waiting for you to come to us with a number.
Any questions for Laura while she's here? I know that both towns have been working, and it appears that there is progress going on.
And I do want to address, there seems to be this concept that, you know, there's some kind of shady shenanigans or something going on. I assure you, you would be bored to tears being in some of these meetings. A lot of our focus has really been on what we wanted out of the audit, so that's really been our primary focus. We've got that now posted, we're waiting for responses and all of that. So the most recent meeting and our last meeting that we've had was today, and we sort of came to a common understanding of what we think our approach should be together cooperatively as a town. And I want to say, sometimes something positive comes out of something negative, or at least this is the way I like to look at life, it helps me get through a little bit. And the one positive thing that I can say that has come from this is, in my own personal memory, I don't remember the two towns working together strategically in advance of the budget being presented. We would kind of compare notes, oh, you know, town administrator to town administrator, or occasional selectman to selectman, but we've opened up a dialogue together, and I think that this is going to actually help in the long run, the schools and the towns. But, you know, we are partners, and we want to really keep that partnership going. It's tenuous, so I beg you not to do anything that's going to upset the apple cart, because we've really, really worked hard to try to preserve this. So that's all I've got to say on that, and thank you for indulging me.
Don?
I just want to respond back to Chris. I know you talk about the commitment to the agreement...
Thank you, Laura.
...of both towns that they made. And when they entered into the regional agreement, it was under the guise of Desi, so it's not just the two towns standing alone with this commitment together. Part of that commitment does say, and both towns will follow all laws as amended. So I just want to share this information for people who may be coming in tonight and just watching or listening tonight, that the statutory method became available in 2007. So that was part of those laws as amended. It was available. The perception is that this is being forced or pushed just this year. I know, it was an option back in 2007, and had it been implemented back then, it may not have been so painful to one or the other side. So I, again, just looking...
So can I respond back?
Well, Chris?
Can I respond back?
Most certainly.
Thank you.
And Fred?
The fundamental basis for the construction of this region, this partnership, was based upon the economics that are in that agreement. So if we're going to say that the state allows us to change that, then I think it would be foolish for us to presume that, well, we're just going to keep going on as a regional district. The marriage was based upon a huge economic piece. The economic piece clearly said, this is how the costs were going to be split. So we're going to throw that out the window, and we really have to talk about, do we still have a partnership? Whether the state allows us to do it or not. So that's, that's my big point with this. I'm not arguing whether it's legal or not, whether this could have been done or not. What I'm saying is, we looked each other in the eye, we said, this is how we're going to do it, then we changed it. Well, then we've got to figure out, are we still together or not?
Fred?
There were three series of events, and maybe this, you know, my mind works maybe differently than others, and most certainly respect everybody's opinion. Ed Reform Act of '93 came Chapter 70 funding. Once you got those funds, and the funds were channeled into the districts, you didn't have that piece in it before. So what the state did was, they looked at your some demographics, and that's how you would determine for your Chapter 70 funding. The statutory method actually was part of the original Ed Reform Act, so that's when it was first available. Come the, I don't know if it was '95, '96, something like that, they recognized through some districts that wanted to use an agreement method, and an agreement method was allowed, or they, as they called it, was the alternative method, which is anything that wasn't statutory. Then in 2007, under Romney, they changed the wealth factors, and they changed the way they determined how much Chapter 70 funding your towns would get. And it tied into the way the Chapter 70 money was distributed to the two towns. It all comes in one check to the district, but it's separate funds. Each town has a minimum local contribution, and then a foundation budget. And each foundation budget is different, and it changes year to year. It's based upon how many kids you have and what classes, because it costs less to educate a 2nd grader than it does an 11th grader. They backfill your monies with Chapter 70. So what's happened is, they determine Whitman can afford to spend X dollars, the difference between your minimum local contribution and your Chapter 70 funding. So we're getting the ability to get certain funds from the state, we're having, we're required to pay certain dollars, so they changed the whole method and the whole way of how you pay. And under statutory, they say, pay what we're requiring you to pay, and then you split the rest as per your agreement. And that's where things, you know, become vastly different, so to speak. Last year, Whitman spent $3.8 million more than the minimum required contribution. Hanson was about $800,000 to $900,000 more. So even on the 60-40 split, Whitman was paying a much, much larger portion of what the required dollars were, if you can look at it that way. So that's one of the big differences between the statutory or the agreement method. You know, it sort of levels the playing field with the state monies, et cetera. I agree, this is a very horrible, harsh thing for the people in Hanson to have to absorb. I agree wholeheartedly there. And, you know, I think that we all have to work to try and be able to lessen the blow as much as possible, you know, to be able to make it forward, you know, so to speak. Why it wasn't done earlier, none of us knew, you know, and, you know, same thing Socio or Votek. Both Whitman and Hanson have been paying statutory to Socio Votek, not knowing that that's how the assessment was given, you know? We just never knew, no one knew. But they did issue that memo in 2007, for whatever reason, it never got from the administrative office upstairs to us down here, or the folks that were down here at the time.
Well, there's also another issue, and it comes up with this particular device and that particular device. When people put on the, and use the internet to say that this was a money grab, or this was to backfill an issue in Whitman, this really had nothing to do with Whitman. This had to do with what Fred just discussed about the change in the method of assessment. Was it Whitman saying, "We can come out of this with a giant amount," as usually is stated, and then people are jumping to that? It had nothing to do with Whitman being at fault here. They are not at fault. And we hear this, you know, and see it, and then it comes up with people in both towns of, this is going on. It's not. This was a state thing.
One more thing if I could add. In my heart of hearts, I truly believe that no matter what this committee would ever have voted, we would end up at a statutory method. Now knowing that the town would have to approve the agreement method, and they would have to be told the difference, you have taxpayers at town meeting, you can pay this much, or you can pay this much, okay? If you choose to, you can vote the budget okay, but if you turn down the alternative method, it goes back to the school committee. And in my heart of hearts, I see it coming back to us, and then going to a super wide town meeting, and it's statutory method no matter what, according to the laws of Des and Commonwealth of Mass, actually. So that's one of the items that run through my head, you know, when I'm making a vote and looking at the whole of everything, so to speak. But don't want to keep kicking that horse.
Anyone else from the committee?
I do.
Been on the board now for 70 years, for six years before this all came forward.
Always tried to get things done ahead of time, like Commissioner Ford always said, nothing ever gets done. Well, nothing's, we have ways of getting things done, but I did see, I mean, it's going to come up when they come up with the regional agreement again. Said it on a meeting, and nothing got done in those meetings, because it all comes back. The original agreement has to be changed in many, many ways. We tried to do that. Whitman balked on it for another type of clause, but if they never balked on this, this would have been in stone and whatever, you know? The monies just not come out of the school systems from either town. And I hate to say it, it never will, unless it's a significant override, which would suck personally for me. But we have to start realizing as towns, the six to seven years I've been up here, the towns aren't going to back the school systems. So it doesn't, it doesn't help us out without an override. So the towns have to realize, in order to provide for this school system, they're going to have... to have to do an override. When we lost our funding from the 70s down to where we are now, and we're still higher than most towns, that's a big void to fill in for the schools. So, the school's been going backwards since then. The whole time that both towns, you know, not picking on any, you know, I'm going to use everybody as an example, by department, police departments, DDoPs, the whole things, we're getting all that extra money the state was paying. So, when they plug a pool, nothing ever backfilled for the school system. They've been taking the hit ever since. You know, over in Whitman, we just put on new firefighters, EMTs. Schools, lost. We lost positions. This is not good for the children of both towns. This whole regional agreement thing has to be done, but it's just like we were trying to say, I mean, I said it when they were trying to form that the last time, I don't trust the two towns individually trying to get together, because it's not going to be done. You know, I don't know what they've been doing on the side now. Hopefully, they've been getting closer and closer. That's unknown to anybody here. So, it's hard for us to come back and try to make a decision to change something. We're still going on the same input. Nothing's been going forward for this school system since I've been up here. It's pretty disgraceful thing to see, I mean, my kids missed out on great deals. My youngest is now is the junior. By the time anything gets fixed, he'll never see a dime of it, which is a shame. There's a lot of kids that went through this system, couldn't get the things they needed. I mean, we're sending our kids out, this year here, we just made sure our kids are going to finally learn how to do a checkbook, and things like that, that haven't been done in years. So, we're basic needs in junior high school, when I came through the school system. So, we've been losing and losing and losing. The only way this is going to get together, the towns have to realize, you need overrides. Personally, I hate that, because, you know, like everybody's going to say, taxes are high. Are they? That's up to the individual person. But to always have towns putting this down, it's like, one way or the other, like Fred said, moving forward, we're going forward with the school budgets, and one town's going to say no, one town's going to say yes, it's going to end up in the statutory anyways, because that's what the law is. We've always been on the assumption we were doing statutory, the checkbox was checked off, but we weren't doing it that way. These are the things, the realizations. I understand it's going to be a very bad hardship to Hanson, but unless the two towns can get together and come up with something, as a school committee, we have to keep going forward to come up with a budget, and the towns have to figure out how to deal with that. That's our job, our task, is for the kids. We set the budget, you know, for the years, when it was the 60-40 split. That wasn't a, we weren't going to the town saying, here, here's an 8% increase, it's an 8% assessment, here's what you owe us to continue the education of these children. People don't get that. It was never an increase of the budget. The budget was always a small increase, because we can't go higher. People have to start learning that. And to say, you know, are we in a partnership? It wouldn't matter. If one town tried to pull out of this district now, it's going to be five to 10 years before they can do it. So, we're going to be in a crap hole anyways. But we have to get these two towns together, get together, figure this out, if we have to, you know, if we get some saying that we can do something in one or two years, fine, but to push it, keep pushing things down. We're never going to resolve anything in these towns. The funding just doesn't come up to the school. That's, that's all I'm going to say. It's been six, seven years, we don't get anywhere.
Thank you. Chris?
So, I think a part of the big issue here is what Laura said, in terms of, if we end up where we are, and we have to go to Hanson for an override, just to basically fund level services, then the next several years are not going to be pretty. They're just not. So, the utilization of an override as a forced, you have no choice, right? Because what would be the, what the typical citizen in Hanson, what's their, what's their choice? Either vote for the override, or we're going to have to cut a whole bunch of stuff. Not going to do that, so of course they're going to vote. But for the next several years, we're not going to get support. The way to get support is what we said we were going to do at the beginning of this year, before this issue came up, which is, we're actually going to go to the towns, and we're going to bring them here and show them the value of education. Because you're right, it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked. We're going to literally have to go and show people what they're going to get for those dollars. That's how we get an override passed. We actually show them the value of what we're providing to the town, not, you have to do it because we said so. It's got to be a clear, black and white, oh my God, I can see how this is going to help us as a town. I'm going to vote for this. That's the way to get it done. If we can do that, then we'll get there. But if we took all the energy and efforts and all this that we've done for the last six, nine, 12 months, and actually put it towards that, I'm telling you right now, that override would pass. But we're, instead, we're spending all the time fighting, fighting, and if we keep doing that, then yes, Dan, we're going to keep ending up in this exact same place.
Mr. O'Brien?
So, just to give an example, somebody that was able to sell an override, because you had brought it up, Whitman Fire. They went to the residents and said, hey, here's what we need, and here's why we need it. That's why they got the extra firefighters. They proved, they proved why they needed it, and I believe it went to an override and passed, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. But, and so my point with it is, is, for me, the big struggle is, and with many people I've talked to in Hanson is, so right now, I think it's like 2.2, 2.3 million, just the way that sat, you know, when we came out of the last set of meetings. To override a million dollars, $2 million, whatever it is, we're not getting ahead. That's what the issue is, is you're, you're doing an override, say, just for the schools to have level service. We're not even getting ahead. So, and that's a tough part, and Fred, you're absolutely right, and so is Laura, and Chris, and what they said, and Fred, you're right, is, is we have to take a hard look at it, because I, if, how do I put it? We have to come up with numbers that, and we've always tried to do this. I've been here for almost nine years, I've got roughly 10 weeks left. Nobody's running Hanson, so this is my official, I'm not running, which, these guys have already known that anyway. But for nine years, we've always, and it's, and it's never been pleasant. I don't think in the nine years I've been here, it's ever been ever pleasant. Budget, budget time's always tough for everybody. But this, last year, because I said to these guys last year, like, that was bad. I'd never thought it could get worse. And it is worse. And Fred, you're right, that we've got to come up with something reasonable. I believe is the word that you used to do it, because otherwise-
Not getting it.
-we're not getting it. We're not getting it. And, and that is, that's great, what Laura had said, that the two towns are conversing right now, and that's on the, on the docket tonight, on the agenda to talk about, to open up the regional agreement, and hopefully that will help things out.
Hopefully, we'll hear stuff, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So, we hear stuff.
Yep.
We're going to be in the same boat. It's not going to change.
But that's the kicker, is to talk an override, usually you're doing an override to try to get something more.
No, that's what I mean. If you're going to do an override, you're going to do it to get everything settled once and for all, not to keep us just to go like this-
Yep.
-hanging on, and then falling off the cliff again.
Right. And people don't like overrides, nobody does. Yep, that's all I had.
While we're on the subject of overrides-
Yeah.
-by department, that's how they got theirs. But let's also go back to some of the fundamental problems of what our budget is, okay? Sustainability-
Mm-hmm. That's a big one.
And the fact that we do get 25 million, or roughly 50% now, it keeps dwindling down, but 50% of our budget is, comes from the state in aid, and it increases, last year was 0.4%, less than half a percent. The towns can only raise and appropriate, you know, what, 2.5%?
2.5.
So, you know, plus maybe they get lucky with a couple excise tax bills, maybe I buy a new car, whatever. You know, there's only so much money that they can garner, and that's where we seem to run in that conundrum. You know, we turn around, I want to do an override, and I forget who it was I was talking to recently, but, you know, my hope and dream is that every student gets something like this, so they don't have to carry a book full of bags, they can check on an article, they read something, they hit it, and if it's right on the internet, it's up to date, it's state of the art, and that's what the kids deserve in today's world. The problem being is, where the heck do you come up with the money to pay for it?
Yep.
You know? And it's another year that we're just going to hope to do whatever we can with and whatnot. But part of the biggest problem is the way the state funds us, period, as well. You know, Student Opportunity Act, you know, you have an opportunity if you live in certain towns and cities.
Chris, and Dawn, and Rosemary's been very patient.
I just want to say that I'm encouraged to hear that the towns are talking. Just remind everyone that we had a meeting when we established a committee to discuss this, and we had members from both town administrator, couple selectmen. And at that time, we basically deferred to them, because we knew ultimately it was going to have to be decided by them. And at the time, the discussion was, we'll use statutory the first year, and then we'll work something out. And that wasn't necessarily a comfortable position, but it was, it made the most sense at the time. And I don't, I haven't heard anything that they've been, there's been any dialogue until tonight, so I am encouraged. But at the same time, I believe in the principle of the statutory method, but I also, there's a big part of me that understands that, you know, we are in a partnership, and we do have an extended community, and it's important to understand the other side. So, I'm, I'm listening to the towns and see what they're, what they're discussing, what they're working through. Because I, you know, we could, we could do whatever we want to do here at this committee, but ultimately, it's going to be decided by the towns or the townspeople. So, that's kind of where we are, I think, at this point.
Dawn?
Fred, just a response to your comment, you want the kids to have technology so they don't have to carry a bag full of books? They don't carry a bag full of books. That's part of our problem, too. We don't have enough books to provide to every student. We have classroom sets, kids have books to learn from, but we have lost so many supplies, even that. I don't know if some of our residents understand this. When I went to high school, I got math, science, English, social studies, I had to go home, I had to cover them. Kids don't have to do that now, because they don't have their own textbook issued to them. My child in middle school doesn't get her own copy of The Outsiders to go home and read a couple chapters at night tonight, and come in tomorrow and have a pop quiz on it, or, they read in class, because that's the classroom copy. So, I would love to see more supplies. So, Mr. Howard, your comment, bring the residents in and show them what we do have in the school, what's wonderful in the school, and how our kids are thriving, but also what we need, what is deficient, what we're missing. And working together with the towns, it would be wonderful. Part of my research, I've gone on the Department of Revenue, Department of Labor Services, and looked at area towns and budgets, and what surrounding towns spend as a percent of their budget on education. Hanson is spending 42% of their municipal budget in 2018. Whitman, 46%. Halifax spends 59% of their municipal budget on education. Mansfield spends 53%. Abington, 48%. So, as I mentioned at the last school committee meeting, and the reason I amended the minutes tonight, was because sometimes, even in my own household, budgeting comes down to priorities. I decide for my family what the priority is to spend on things, and, you know, as a committee, we decide, when we look at this budget, what's our priority? Ms. Otina spoke to class sizes, is our priority, serving those students, number one, with class sizes. And the towns also, what are their priorities? What do they choose to spend their money on?
Fred?
And one thing to bring up, and it's funny you mention Abington, you take Abington, and their amount of pupils that they've reported to DESI for this year, you compare them to Whitman, and you have the exact same amount of pupils. Now, Abington's budget's 34 million and change. If you take Whitman, and you say, okay, we're, what was it, 14,398, 14,398,000, another 13, 5, I think, was chapter 70 before the hold harmless, and if you just try and divvy up the hold harmless a little bit, you come up to, in the 30 million range, maybe a little over 30, you know, right around 30 million. And Abington, with their spending, doesn't include health insurance and teacher benefits, because that's paid for by the town. So, yes, you do have other towns. We have target share. That's the other thing that DESI has, that both Whitman and Hanson aren't meeting. Whitman is a lot closer, but you have target share of where they want you to be, and how much they want you to spend. You know, and I agree, we need to prioritize our budget to try and get through this year with the least impact to everybody, and then it's just going to be a matter of the towns getting through, you know, whatever we need to get through, and go from there. But I just want to bring that up, because even though you compare what they spend on education, there's also quite a big chunk that doesn't come on to that part, so to speak.
Yep, I agree.
Name, address, town, please.
My name is Rosemary Conley. I am speaking as a resident, not as a finance committee member. Earlier tonight, we mentioned the reason to enter a regional agreement. I did have a chance, and we had a wonderful person in earlier this year, out of Suzanne Bump's office. I would highly recommend that everybody on this board read his audit of regional schools. Within that audit, it states, towns without, with students with less than 3,000 children, I don't believe would even be allowed to leave a regional school. Okay? So, it is a financial advantage to be within a regional school, even if you have under 2,000, and I believe Hanson does. So, there is a financial advantage. It also, there's also been a misnomer that the agreement is legal, right? And there is plenty, this has not gone through the courts, this particular thing, we've had some judgments, but another town in 2012 did. Dartmouth-
Rosemary, excuse me, excuse me, we're on budget, we're not on regional agreement. We'll get to that-
I am going to, I am going to get into budget.
Okay.
Although the case detail specific, is specific to the regional agreement in greater New Bedford, the court language indicates that schools, district funding protocols that do not meet the Educational Reform Act, wealth-based systems are likely invalid. So, this whole idea that we are somehow exiting a legal binding thing, I think we need to settle down on that. We also have to consider that Whitman state aid under chapter 70 is Whitman's resource. And let's consider that Whitman receives per student this year, 13, $1,300 extra per student. Under the old agreement, we would have pooled that, and part of the state aid would have gone over to Hanson. That undermines the intent of chapter 70, and the supports that Whitman was meant to have, those resources that are Whitman's resources. Whitman has carried a burden for many years, and we are very much talking about the burden of Hanson, which I empathize with, but we must consider the burden of Whitman. Whitman's town pays a larger percentage of the budget. Chapter 70 is meant to ease that, ease that situation. So, it isn't anything more that we're asking from Hanson, we're asking for a true partnership financially. And we're asking for everybody to get their mind on target share, and get us out of hold harmless, and out of that debt, and focused on the kids and education. Of course, we want to be considerate, of course, we want to work with everybody, but I think a lot of misinformation is being thrown around, and I think people need to, considering this budget in terms of what the kids need, and what we can really afford. The town tells us we can, I mean, the state tells us what we can afford with that target share. It becomes a choice about how we budget after that. So, I just hope to start having that honest conversation. Whitman did not just pull out an agreement, Whitman should, Whitman citizens should have been given both options, the alternative and the statutory, and it should have been voted on. It was hidden from Whitman citizens for many years, at a cost of millions and millions of dollars. So, I'd like people to be very careful about how they use their language and how we work forward. Thank you very much.
Chris?
Yeah, so, so two comments. So, one, I think- So one, I think, again, when we talk about partnership, that's, the ask part is the part that I'm struggling with, because I'm not seeing an ask, I'm seeing a, this is how it's going to be. Right? So that's where I'm, again, can we come together as a compromise, not, we have six votes here, we have four votes here, so this is how it's going to be? Because that's not an ask to me, that's a, that's a, that's not an ask. The second thing is, again, everyone here should go back and look at the person from the state that sat right in that chair, and she said repeatedly, either method is fine, either method is legal, if you choose to make a change, you should work together and compromise. She specifically said, look at a five-year rollout. That's what she said. Go look at the video, it's there. So that's the part that, again, I, I feel like we're missing in terms of, it's an all or nothing, and it's an immediate. Can we find a way to work together as partners to figure out a way that perhaps, yes, we can move to the full statutory method over time, not two months?
Anyone else on budget have anything different before we move on?
If, if I could, and this is...
John, go ahead.
If I could, and this is mundane, and it almost doesn't fit in, but to the serious conversation you've had, when you look at the budget, you're going to see there are a number of line items that are blank, and I just want to explain it to you. This budget was, was prepared using the budget module of our software, which allows me to go back and get, get previous years. It turns out that over time, there have been some line items that you're not using anymore, or got re-titled and consolidated in other line items, but in order to keep the integrity of using that, that software, and that information, you're going to get a budget that you see those blank lines. I haven't lost my mind, and it's, and it's not a mistake. It's just a, it's just part of what I deal with, with the software. It's intentional.
Randy Lamontino, Selectmen, Whitman. I've been involved in this process now, going on a pretty good amount of time. What I will say, I've been to a lot of these meetings, I've watched a lot of these meetings. There's been a constant theme throughout the past six or seven years of what the school committee's job is. That is to support education, that is to support the superintendent, that is to support the budget, as you deem fit. I don't know how we just went so far off track that the chairman of the Hanson Board of Selectmen stood up here and said that we have worked with Whitman, we are ready to move forward, well, we are. We need a budget. Okay? So I need you relatively soon, and I think Laura would say the same thing, to let us have that next piece of how we are going to work in. It's very tough to say we're going to work towards something when you don't know what you're working for, or towards. Now, what I ask you is if the consensus of this committee is you feel that a level-funded budget is the best way to make sure education pushes forward this year, and present that. If you feel that you're going to go for the whole thing, and that's the best way to do it, present that. There are a lot of other people out there right now working on the override piece, if necessary, on the funding piece. If your job, that I've heard over the last seven years of sitting in these meetings and watching them regularly, is to support education, to support the superintendent, to support the kids, then make your decision based on that. But we need it relatively soon, because that's what we're going to figure out how we move forward between the two towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go? Okay, thank you, everyone. Regional agreement. The reason I put it on tonight's agenda is because I've had some requests from not only independent people, but I've had some requests from the towns of elected officials. They want us to come forward, send them a letter to formulate what we're going to do, you know, how many people we want from each town, and put together another regional agreement committee, because that's part of what needs to be done. Whether it's budgetary time, we've got to move forward, we have to get back. Also, do a regional agreement, come up with an agreement that can be put forth to the towns. Are we going to be back here again next year? We're going to be back here doing the same thing as, as Dan said. We've been working, we're going to be going around. The committee, as Randy just said, that's our job, and we spend a tremendous amount of time in meetings, doing exactly what we're doing, and nothing changes, because we keep having the same issues. So we have to make up what we think the demographic should be of regional committee, send the boards of Selectmen the request for who they're going to send us for a volunteer, and then panel this committee, and get right back at it. And it's going to take, I know that the last regional agreement committee, we talked, and we had probably too many members, and we started paring it down. So that's the thought of why it's on tonight's agenda, is to get the letters to the town, and get this committee appointed. So what's your thoughts? One board of Selectmen member from each town? I believe that's what we had at the last meet, at the last time.
Yeah.
I, I believe you're correct. I was just going to ask what we decided for our school committee.
Well, we, we were all over the place, and then it got, we started to go to meet, and we were asked to suspend it.
Right.
To, because it was too large. One finance committee member from each town?
Thoughts?
Yeah. Nope, that's fine. Keep going.
One of the three major boards.
Pardon me?
One each of every board, school committee, Selectmen, FinCom, and...
Citizen at large.
Citizen at large.
Yeah, one from each town?
Yeah.
So two school committees, then, not one school committee, right?
One from each town.
One from each town, okay.
One school committee, one citizen, one FinCom, one board of Selectmen.
And T A.
How about, um, town administrators are pretty busy, but I mean, what are your thoughts? Town administrators, the stakeholders, I mean.
We can put it out there and see if they want to.
What alley?
We can put it out there to them and see if they want to, if they have the time and inclination.
The thing we don't want to do is get, we're at eight right now.
Yep.
No, that's enough, that's, that's enough.
If we get one town administrator from each town, that brings us to ten.
Even if they want to be on there, they're too busy in budget season, so...
Well, anyone can come to the meetings and have their input.
Yeah.
Anyone, whether there's fifty citizens at large, these are open meetings, these are not closed meetings. So anyone can come and voice their opinion on what they think the structure should be.
Oh, get into the structure now, and then, you know, anyone's entitled to go to an open meeting.
Right, exactly. So...
Leave it at those four, two each, and that big as eight members.
Eight's good.
Eight's good.
All right, Mr. Kane was nice enough to let me just kind of cut in front. If I may, the last regional agreement committee, I know there's been several iterations, but the one just prior to us meeting now, had two selectmen from each town, which I think is good for some redundancy, and I definitely don't want to kill an ant with a cannon. I, I don't want to over-engineer this at all, I don't want to have more people than we can, you know, use, but either a town administrator or another selectman, I think, is important, just to get a good balance there. Just my two cents worth, it's your committee, but...
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to give the towns the option. You know, two representatives, either from, you know, board of Selectmen and the T A, or two board of Selectmen. Let the towns have the choice.
What's your thoughts?
Yeah.
Either way, yeah.
Okay.
Give them the option.
Keep in mind, we're going to have Jeff and George.
Yep.
It's another meeting that they look forward to going to.
George says he's got every night open.
That brings us, that brings us to twelve.
Breakfast meetings.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Six-thirty, bus duty.
George, if I got a vest for you for bus duty.
What's is the question?
Yes.
John? Name, address, town, you know, I, just for people watching.
Sean Kane, thirty-one Forest Street, Whitman. I guess my priority is conflict resolution. You know, I feel like both sides have strong arguments, as I said before, and people are butting heads online and otherwise, and without conflict resolution as like the major priority, things are going to continue to be that way. I think the fundamental way to resolve this conflict is through the regional agreement. Right now, it is in a dysfunctional state. It is. And because the town, the school budget has such an impact on both towns, as long as it's in a dysfunctional state, it'll continue to, to disrupt all town departments, you know, the budgets of not just the region, but the, the budgets of the town. I can't think of something, I can't think of a more important committee right now than the, the, the committee that will resolve this conflict through the regional agreement. It's hard to separate the, the economics from the agreement, they're built right into it, you know what I mean? The, what comes out of that committee is going to, is going to provide the solution to this problem. I can't say it any other way. That solution is going to go back to the towns to be voted on, obviously, and it's going to have to go, you know, to the commissioner, but as long as we don't have that solution on paper, as long as that we're in this dysfunctional state, if this gets pushed into, you know, we're already past the town meeting, it's probably too tight to get to town meeting, so town meeting's going to come and go, and the regional agreement is in a dysfunctional state, which is very difficult for all departments. And then if it gets kicked into, to next year, what happens? You know, the thing I would caution, Chris, with not taking, not taking the lead on this, is that this is something that I think we need to be assertively taking on the challenge of resolving this conflict, because there are some people who, if your intention simply was to keep taxes low, then it's not such a bad thing, I'll put it that way, to be blunt, to have the regional agreement in a dysfunctional state, because you almost assuredly will, will prevent all overrides, to make it clear. Once this regional agreement is, is resolved through the, the full process, then we get back on stable ground, and then we can maybe move forward together. But we certainly won't do that unless the regional agreement is resolved, to make my point. So I guess, I guess I'm asking for, is for you to be a little bit more assertive. Yep?
Thank you. Fred?
And to respond, I firmly believe that statutory is the way we end up, et cetera, and firmly believe that, you know, that's the path to take. That being said, I think that what I need to do up here, and hopefully, and I believe that I work with a bunch of confident people, and competent people, that would do the same, is you take what your beliefs are, but you also try and look at what the big picture is. And the big picture is, we've got a, we've got a conflict that we have to resolve. I don't think we can get a new regional agreement done in the timeframe that we need to, but maybe perhaps we can figure out a way to move forward that's going to be palatable for the folks in Hanson and for Whitman. And then you work from there, you know? Then you look and you go forward. But the townspeople will ultimately have the vote.
That's correct.
And they'll ultimately have the choice. All we can do is try and give them the best direction we can, and after many, many hours of trying to come up with ideas and different things. I mean, heck, I'm on the phone with this gentleman, and he's calling me back at eight o'clock yesterday morning, because I have a half-baked idea that may or may not work, and you never know. But you throw it against the wall, and you're going to try. So, you know, I agree with what you're saying. I think people have firm beliefs, but hopefully, people have confidence in us that we can try and put even our personal feelings aside, and try to see if there's something that can be palatable on all ways.
Okay. An entertaining motion to appoint a committee to ask the towns to appoint either two people from the board of Selectmen, or one person be the town administrator, and one person be the, from the board of Selectmen, one from finance committee, one from school committee, which we will appoint here, and one citizen at large for each town. That is the motion I'm entertaining.
So moved.
Second.
Just wanted to say...
Discussion.
Do we need the citizens at large, and what would that process be to secure that person?
They, they would go to the town board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And apply to them to be the citizen at large, and the board would make that discussion, decision, I mean.
By the board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the motion. Does everybody understand it? Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Michelle, will you send the appropriate letters to the board, notifying them, and we'd like to do this within the next, well, I should have probably entertained this in the motion, within the next two weeks to three weeks?
Eleventh.
Yeah.
No later than.
I have, here it is.
If we have people ready to go next week, I know we were going to set only budget, but if you took five minutes on that...
Five minutes.
Okay.
They wanted the citizen at large. They might not have the citizen at large.
You have to get the citizen at large.
Yeah, that's going to take some time.
If possible?
About March eleventh?
March eleventh, if possible?
We have a school committee meeting.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking about.
May, Bob may ask a question. Do we, are we going to vote on the members from the school committee tonight, on who's going to be on it?
Yeah, we can do that, as soon as we're done. I'm just looking to get this set first.
Yep.
If possible, by March eleventh, is everybody in agreement with that?
Correct.
So we can get to work, work the better.
Yep.
Okay. I just got tweeted, the girls won, so they're on to the next.
So you want the committee formed, just so we're good for the notes, you want the committee formed by March eleventh?
Yes. Now, the only fly in the ointment might be, and I see Laura coming up to tell me, they may not be meeting some of them until...
They're not meeting until March seventeenth. What, I've already on the record as an Irish person as being against, but however, our next meeting is not until the seventeenth.
Okay. How about March twenty-fifth?
Well, I mean, you could do it the next, you could compel us to make a decision that night, and, and, you know, begin meeting the eighteenth, if you'd like. Okay?
All right, thank you. I saw you coming up, Laura, and it was running through my head that that might be the issue, no meeting.
All he wants to know is we meet.
Okay. Any further discussion on the...
March eighteenth. March eighteenth, we need to know from both communities who is representing outside the school committee.
Yep.
Awesome.
Everybody good to that? Everybody know what the motion is? You want to hear it?
No.
Everybody good? All those in favor? In unanimous? Okay. North River Collaborative.
I have no report from the collaborative. We're good.
Academic school calendar, old business. In your packet, you will find the academic school calendar.
So, so Bob, if I could, so in your packet, you have two drafts of two calendars. I also received an email, and I think Michelle forwarded you an email from, from four parents that had some concerns about the academic calendar. So we made some modifications. The first calendar that you have is the calendar that I presented at the last school committee meeting, with one exception. We would start school for students on the twenty-sixth of August, but we would come to school on September first. After having conversations with, with Mr. Trantor at Hanson Middle School, he feels he can accommodate the local primary, because it's just a primary, with students in the building, so we could have school on that date.
Okay.
With that being said, the end of school would be June fourteenth, and that calendar starts us with students on the, on the twenty-sixth of August. Friday, the fourth of September off, September first is a school day, and as you can see on that calendar, we would end on, on June fourteenth. The consideration from some of the parents that I received feedback from was they'd like to start school on September thirty-first, or, excuse me, I think that kids would like September thirty-first. August thirty-first, so we would have teachers in on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of August. Elementary open houses would be on the twenty-seventh of August. Students would start on the thirty-first of August and go through that full week. Friday, the fourth, would be a half-day, but it would be a school day. Everything else is sustained on that calendar, and we would end school on June sixteenth, So those are the two calendars, and we can make any modification to that calendar that's out there. But we're, one of the reasons we're trying to not nail down, and George just reminded me, we're trying to make sure we have an opening day... me, we're trying to make sure we have an opening day speaker for our teachers, and we don't have an opening day yet, and then getting, getting our opening day preparations there. So gave you a couple of options. Again, we're flexible on, on different things. I, I just wanted to make sure that, that community members, parents were heard, that they had some alternative ideas to the, to the school calendar.
How many, how many, uh, parents?
The, the email had four parents sign to that, that you received.
Can I ask a question? I have a question.
Go ahead, Ally.
Um, on the first calendar, the, what's the thought process behind having Friday the 4th off of September? What's, and then Monday as well, obviously for the holiday?
Just for a four-day weekend? Because we started, we, kids would be in already the Wednesday before Labor, or, they'd start on the 26th, they'd go for seven concurrent days and then be able to have a long Labor Day weekend with their family. That was the thought process behind that. That could also be a school day, and we'd, we'd be out another day earlier in June. But we'd be starting, we, you know, again, we're flexible around that.
Go on.
And just for communication's sake, both calendars include December 23rd off.
That's correct.
And Good Friday is customary.
Yeah.
Did you say September 23rd off?
December.
December 23rd. I'm sorry, I thought you said September.
December, yep. And just for information too, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, is that a contractual day for our district?
Yes.
Okay, so that is off, I'm just clarifying.
December 23rd's not a contracted day.
It is not a contracted day. December 23rd is not a contracted day, but it's been historically a day off in the system, and I had some positive acknowledgements to keep that day off.
Yeah, Wednesday I could, I could see doing that, you know, because, I mean, you got Thursday and Friday with the holiday and whatnot. So if we did the 4th as a school day, kids could be out on June 11th.
Meaning, meaning on the original calendar, if we started on the...
Yeah.
Right, and, and school on the Friday.
Correct. That is correct.
I like the four-day weekend. I like the four-day weekend.
Four-day weekend would be, I like, I like that, so.
I have a question on one of these calendars.
I like that.
You said it ends June 14th?
It would be on the first calendar with Friday the 4th off, June 14th would be...
And 21st is highlighted, right?
Yeah.
But it'll be the 14th with no snow.
Right. The 21st is with snow.
It just didn't say the last day, it just says instructional.
Right.
And we're on the other calendar, says instructional day, early release, last day of school. I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, those notes are just, we had someone...
Yep. No, I just, for my own knowledge, before I go on the table, it's like, when is the actual last day? Why is there a half-day on the last day of one and not the other?
I mean, I'm gonna have to defer to the members of the board that have kids, what they would think would be more preferable. I mean, myself, I remember when I was a kid, the quicker you could get out, the better, but...
It's just, if I may, it's just my thought process, speaking just for myself, granted my kids are older and not in school so much anymore, but most parents wouldn't have the 4th off, so I, in, in my mind, that would be hard for them to find a sitter for that day with their kids being home from school, and I think it would be more beneficial for the kids to be in school that day?
We'd have a half-day.
Half-day?
It'd be a half-day.
That's right, you did say that.
That's where we do our, all of our reports, the teachers have to read, so that would be a half-day, not a full day.
Oh, the fourth's a half-day? Oh, okay. Oh, I got you.
It's a day off half-day, or a half-day.
I got you, okay, okay, I got you.
Anyone else before I go to the...
Half-day's fine.
Don?
I did hear from parents, in addition to the email, some other parents too, who were surprised with going back a week and a half before Labor Day. So they felt that August 26th, although it seems late because it's August 26th, you know, the way Labor Day falls, being September 7th, so the feedback I got was looking for August 31st start.
But that goes to...
Realistically, I got very similar feedback, but, you know, once I explained, you know, it's just because Labor Day is so late, I had, everybody was just cool with it.
Yeah.
You know, that I spoke to. You know, the whole thing is, the kids are gonna go 180 days, it's just a question of which...
When you get out. When you start, when you get out, that's pretty much it, yeah. Three days, one way or the other. Yep.
Well...
I have another question.
Go ahead.
It kinda goes along with this.
I like June 11th better.
If we start school on August 26th, if we go back to that, is there any thought about adjusting the cutoff date for kindergarten? Is it, is it still like September...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. 14.
Yeah, kinda...
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I don't know, I'd have to look at that.
I can't remember.
We start, we, we always started the year bef, I mean, August 26th is a date that we've started before.
Right.
26, 28, something like that. So I'd have to look at that, but let me, I, I don't have an answer for you. That, that's just a question that came out of the blue.
Yeah, it, I was just thinking about it.
One of the reasons for that, and George reminds me frequently, is if, if we go with the later start date, remember, Labor Day is early next year, so it'll be a shorter summer if we have any snow. So if we end up going...
Hurricanes.
On the 17th and 18th, we're getting out of school on the 21st, and Labor Day's early. So that, that's just another consideration as we go into next year, it makes for a shorter summer. I also look at, at camp things, camps are gonna be starting on the 21st for some, some summer camps as well. They're used to starting on the 21st now, so.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Christine Swan. I live at 39th Ave here in Whitman. I'm one of the parents that actually did reach out to you in regards to this challenge. One of the things that we also have to think about is all the other towns and when they're starting. So when you talk about camps and when we're gonna start, we won't start until the majority gets out of school. So if all the majority of the children are starting on September 2nd or September 7th after Labor Day, all the camps start when the majority's, after the majority. So we wouldn't start just when Whitman was closed. So we just have to really consider the specific dates when you think about the Friday. As working parents, most of us are working parents, both of us working, we wouldn't have the opportunity to be able to have that additional care on those, on those days for our children. And it does pose, you know, some people have a little bit more flexibility in their jobs. It's a little easier for those teachers that are working in the school system and they have those dates, but that's not applicable to all of us parents. So just really considering when you start, you know, I'm not, I, I do know that based on when Labor Day falls, it could be from the August 26th, and it's not historically as late as it is, but if we continue to start two weeks prior to some of these other children, we're gonna have a gap within camp starting for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
When's graduation?
For next year?
Yeah.
27th?
Yeah.
No matter what?
Yeah.
Just so I don't get kicked in the teeth when I get home, so. You know, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no matter what.
27, thank you.
It's always the Friday.
All right.
Okay, so what's your pleasure? Which calendar would you like? I'd entertain a motion for, so we can go.
Or any modification of those two. I mean, we can, hang on that.
Well, do you want a motion for a start date, then a motion for...
Yeah, let's get a motion for a start date.
I'll make a motion for start date August 31st.
A motion for August 31st start date?
For first-day school.
That calendar? With the 31st being the start date? Does everyone know which one it is?
Page two, right?
Yes.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, so the August 31st start date?
That's kids back to school on the 31st. 31st.
And that eliminates the 4th as a day off, that makes the 4th an early release day.
Correct. So it's a day of school.
Would they have the Friday half-day?
It'd be a Friday the 4th of the half-day. Correct.
The half-day on the 4th.
Okay.
On calendar two?
On calendar two. It's a half-day, so it's not a yellow day, it's just, it's a white day, but it's a half-day.
So that's gonna bring the teachers in on the 27th and 18th?
We will bring the teachers in on the 26th and 27th, so they get their two PD days ahead of time and not on that Friday.
Then the road?
June 16th.
16th.
With no snow.
With no s, or, so there's no snow days built into this at all?
June 23rd will be the five snow days.
Five snow, okay.
June 23rd is five snow. June 16th would be the last full day without any snow or any power outages.
I was gonna say it's one.
Or bad stomach viruses.
Right.
That could not be easy.
So that's that calendar.
Yeah, so basically you're talking two extra days, you swap in two days. The whole thing is, to start the kids on a Monday, they're all, heads are more into it, and they go pretty much that one week, is that a little bit more beneficial, you think?
What day, the 31st now or the 24th?
The 31st.
The 31st.
You want to thrust them into a four, well, four and a half.
Never in a four and a half day week right off the bat, right when they get back. I'm sure you might have some input.
Kevin? Oh, Kevin, definitely wanna hear from you.
Hi, Kevin Kafka, WHEA. Obviously, I get the, the challenges brought on by, you know, staff and students and parents and all these other things. I'd be cautious kind of going into that later start date for a couple of things, right? Obviously, planning and, and what we've typically done, although it's, it's later, that's kind of the week that we've gone back. Looking now at what, June 21st or June 23rd?
With five snow days.
Yeah, so, so with that, so without that, what's the 16th?
16th.
So then you, you run in and of course you, you deal with the cost factor, right? The, obviously the hot buildings and all those other things there, and then with the idea that we have more than that, now we're, what, June 30th is kind of the last? I, I think that's somewhat of a gamble. I think I would be more towards kind of the traditional element in the sense of, you know, the, the initial calendar and proposal. I, I think that gets too risky at the end. I understand the hardship for parents and, and so far, I get that, that's a, that's a real thing, but I, I, I think we may be setting ourselves up for some problems there at the...
Kevin, you would suggest the 26th?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that more, that traditional, so, no, I would, I would suggest the 24th, 25th, I think that was part of the original plan.
Staff. 25th, 24th, 26th.
Yeah, 24th, 25th, and then 26th start for the kids. That's what I would say.
I like that.
Any further discussion? Excuse me.
You like a motion to amend?
I have a question.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, I, the start date of the 26th, and what if we amended the Friday the 4th to be a half-day, a day on?
You could do that as well, and then the kids would be out the 11th.
Right.
Okay. Fred, what was your input before we get 14 amendments?
I happen to, I was going to make a motion to amend the start date to the 26th and the 4th of September to a half-day.
Sure. Is that what you were saying, Ally?
Yep, exactly.
And so that we're backing up to the 11th to get out?
Yeah, which is nice and early.
Sure.
I know.
Okay.
Second.
To lessen...
Is this being decided like tonight? Is tonight the night? Yeah? Okay, so, I know it's, nobody's, not everyone's gonna be happy, we can't please everyone, but one big thing that I hear and, you know, amongst my people, I think, Don, some people may have emailed you about this too, so 4H, it sounds like maybe to a lot of you, not a big deal, but for some kids, 4H is their activity, their sport, it's what they do year-round. So like their so-called tournament for the final end of the year is always the week before, the week before we start back to school, right? So they go to, it's the Marshfield Fair, the 4H kids, if you go to the Marshfield Fair, they have the huge agricultural center, and the 4H kids run that agricultural center, and they spend literally from 8:00 to 5:00, 6:00 PM there for the entire week. If we start late, these 4H kids aren't gonna get to go to their tournament, they're not gonna get to have their, like, end of their, they're not gonna be able to do their thing. So a lot of parents who have reached out to me are worried about that because that's where they showcase their stuff. So I just wanted you guys to...
Jill, you said if they, if we start late?
So, I'm sorry, if we, I'm saying it wrong. If we start early, the Marshfield Fair will be, which, it's not about the Marshfield Fair, right? But it's about the 4H agricultural part. So if we start early, the 4H kids will not be able to participate in their, in what they do.
How many students do we have that participate?
Well, it's not through the school, so you wouldn't really know. There's a lot.
I just wonder if there's any sort of special dispensation, anything we could do that they can make up work or something so that they would be able to participate in something that would be important to them?
I mean, it's, it would be three days of school. Marshfield Fair is from the 24th, 21st, 21st.
21st to the 30th. I mean, we can't run our thing about that, but...
I mean, I do think there would be parents who would literally not send their kids. I would have to make a choice. I don't know, my daughter is involved. This isn't just about me as a teacher. I would like to start early, but when I look at the crew of kids who, that's what they do, I don't know.
Also, I think seven years ago, the Coopers Town team, the, the local Little League team had the same, you know, this happens once every seven years.
Right.
And, and I remember that, and they had to make a decision, and I know at my school, I just said, come, come when you can.
Yeah.
You know? But, but yeah, there are things that...
I mean, is there something we could do? They could write a report about their experience?
That's, no. We're getting that whole department of education.
I know this is part of the... Let's kind of stay to the calendar.
Stay on topic.
One more, and then we're gonna move on.
Cindy McDan, grade five, Hanson Middle School, and I'm also WHEA. I think the 26th start date is a good date to start. We've always started on that date. It's a fluke in the calendar for this year, I agree. And it's Labor Day, that's messing us up. As a classroom teacher, I get more effective teaching time in, in the fall than I do late June. And for me, that's the most important.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the calendar on August 31st, and I have a couple amendments to it. What, Michelle?
Which motion?
Chris, Chris, second.
I second the amendment.
Okay. So would you like to vote on August 31st? Or you wanna go to the amendment? I'll give you a little leeway here.
The amendment is we're starting on the 26th, half a day on the 4th and on the 11th?
Yes.
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 And it has a second, correct, Michelle? Yes. Do you have anything new and different?
Sorry, Heather Simpson, South Abbotman. So whether we start the 26th or the 31st, the end date is only a date of two days difference, correct?
No.
Three, three.
Well, because then we're going to go Tuesday all day.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right.
We're going to go Friday, which, if we were starting the 26th.
Right, you're talking two days without snow.
Right, so we're only talking a difference of two days. So if a lot of these kids are going back early and getting out early, there's not a lot of camp that early at the end if we're going on the consensus of all the other towns. So if some of the other towns are going back September 7th, if your, our kids get out June 12th, they might not have camp for two or three weeks.
What camp?
A lot of like the live camps, the summer camps, they go with what everybody else does. Yeah. For working. Thank you.
Okay, so I have an amendment.
Can we just clarify the start and end dates, please?
Yes, 26th of August.
Start date.
Start date.
Number one, yep, go ahead.
Then that, then with the half day on 9, 4, that leaves June 11th, end day with no snow.
Great, and on the other one?
Hopefully you have that.
That's the amendment, correct, Michelle?
That's what we're voting on.
Everybody understand the amendment, we're going to.
That's what we're voting on.
The other one is eight, start date of 8:31 with an end date of June 16th.
So there is a significant difference.
Yeah, three days, five days.
Yes.
Into a problem week.
Yep.
But you're voting on the amendment with a start date of?
26th.
26th.
August 26th, half a day on the 4th.
Yes.
What?
We're doing discussion?
Go ahead, Fred. We're in discussion.
You know, just the one thing that I feel sort of strongly on, hearing from one of our educators, that it's far more effective for the kids to start on the 26th and that's the best benefit educationally, you know, sort of seals it to my head, so to speak, for me.
Chris? I just am not 100% clear on what we're voting on and.
Don made a motion to start school on August 31st.
Correct.
It was amended by Ally to start on the 26th. It would be much cleaner if we just voted on the start date of the 31st.
Right.
In however it got.
Right.
But an amendment comes in, it can be amended.
Yeah, that's what confused me. Okay.
So we're voting on the amendment.
So, no vote on the amendment would kick us back to the 31st?
That's correct.
Or no calendar, or no calendar.
Let's go.
Pretty much, I don't think no school is going to be a choice.
It takes care of the budget.
No budget, yeah. Motion to move this to Ally. Don't start. Okay, so is there any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay. So the amendment passed. Now we're voting on to accept the calendar with the start date of the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, do you want to write out the start date of the 26th, the 4th is the half day?
June 11th is.
June 11th. June 11th is the projected last date.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the calendar as amended.
Somebody want to second that?
Second.
Discussion. Chris?
Question for these guys. Would you concur with the assessment that from an educational standpoint, there's a benefit to going early?
Starting earlier and, yeah, especially, yeah, testing days. I'd rather have them before the test.
Thank you. We actually had that same discussion at school committee last year on the calendar about whether to go two weeks in December or not, and we decided it's more beneficial prior than it is in the spring.
Any further?
Just to bring that up, right?
Any further discussion before we vote on the amendment?
Got me, Rob.
Okay, all those in.
Just thought of it just now.
Approve. Okay, so does everybody understand which calendar we have now?
Congratulations, the 27th, that's all I need to add. That's all we need, buddy.
All right, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing on school choice for the anticipating year of 2020, 2021. This requires a roll call vote.
Second.
Done?
Yes.
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 Yes. Jeff, you're up.
Sure, I didn't know if anybody from the public wanted to speak first. I'm going to make the recommendation to the school committee to consider keeping school choice open in grades nine and 10 at the high school for 20 students per grade. It's worked out well. And consider keeping it open for all students that transfer out.
Borrow.
In grades 10, 11, and 12, that they could remain in the district for their 11th and 12th year.
Mm-hmm.
Worked out well for us. It's a revenue source, and I like it when kids want to stay in their home school and they don't want to transfer out. It gives us an opportunity to keep them without having difficult conversations.
Any other discussion? Anybody see, I believe you just had an email that showed you the numbers, but if not, Jeff, you want to go over?
Can you, I didn't get, can you send that?
I can send that out again.
Well, we're going to vote on it, so we better discuss.
So, I mean, we have, I think, 66 kids in district right now at the high school and we're, I think we have 30 out. That number has risen. That number is rising because of Tech Academy, some more online stuff. I'd like to just keep kids coming in. I think what hurt us last year as far as entrance is we had, we had cuts and we're having the same conversation again. So unless the other local towns are having cuts, they're not looking at our school. However, I think we put out a good product, soup to nuts. It can be a better product in the high school, but we've got, put out a good product and kids want to come here. And again, I go to the, they want to stay once they're here instead of moving, when their parents move or something move, families split up, I like to keep them here. We are going to actively try to work to get that number down for kids going out. And I think it's cyclical. We don't have any kids in kindergarten right now, but last year we did. We had five kids go to Rockland last year. A year before, we had a couple. And so those is why the numbers went up. But we don't have any, I don't believe in this calendar year. The next report comes out from the state March 1st, so we have a more accurate number. We have 66 kids in the district right now that are staying, or that are, that have come in as choice.
Fred?
I'm a firm believer in what you're doing. Couple stupid questions. One, what do our enrollment projections look like in eighth grade?
Difficult because it's February right now, depending on how many kids want to go to Voc Tech. We're not going to be oversubstituted.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about fifth, sixth, seventh, going up to eighth. High in women, you know, high in women about. But we don't have room to expand it down a grade.
Not yet, no.
I'm just thinking maybe that's a revenue source to bring back a language program or something.
What I would, off that, what I would ask the committee to consider and for discussion, to open it up to kids that leave the district and stay, because there are already a seat and that would be a revenue source for that school.
Don't we already do that?
That's just in the high school.
Just high school. And I think that's.
We have had some difficult conversations with parents when they're, when they move and their sophomore is here in the high school and they have a sixth grader and the sixth grader has to go to the home school when they're in Hanson or Whitman Middle.
Can we judge?
You don't want to break up a family.
That's a discussion item. I've never brought that up before, but that's something that is, we struggle with in central office because there's a family move, the high school student can stay, but the elementary or middle school student would have to go to the home district.
Yeah.
And I usually allow them to stay through the school year depending on when that parent moves, so they can, they don't start a new school in December, so to speak.
I think also something to consider is do you just cap at the first year to eighth grade? Because when you're talking sixth grade and you're, you know, the ability of a sixth grader and a sophomore, yes, sometimes they have to move to their hometown where they, their families just relocated, but to have a middle school experience in the talent you live in, yes, the change is tough, but then you might stay there actually and go to that school since your family did just physically move there. It is a little bit different, I think, at the high school level based on the age of the kid, but I think open for consideration might be if you have an eighth grader. So if there's a sophomore, an eighth grader, the family moves, you might want to consider that, saying, okay, can he just stay? And then go, you know, school choice that in, and then into the high school year.
Now, how would it work if they did that, say, in November? Could we collect double?
Yeah, well, they don't collect double. But you make a notification to the state and what happens is we, we now get school choice billing twice a year? Or is it quarterly?
I don't know.
I think.
We get it several times a year, but you get fractional, fractional students. So if they're here half a year, they count as a five student.
Theoretically, you get double billing.
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
Theoretically. But no, I mean, it's something that we've done and it's worked out well for parents. And like I said, we've allowed, if family moves in January and the kid's in sixth grade, I don't say they have to register January 15th in their new, in their new school.
Can we combine in a motion?
Well, wait a minute. I've got a thought for that, Fred. Hold just on a minute. Ally?
Is it only, you only see the issue come up with eighth graders or did you see it in any other grades where like a high school student can stay, but the, maybe somebody in elementary or a sibling in seventh grade or sixth grade has to?
I've seen it in all.
Yeah.
You've seen it in all.
Every grade level. You could have a family of three, a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and a 10th grader, and they move suddenly because of whatever reason. And we have to tell that parent that in fourth grade, that student has to go to their home school. In seventh grade, that's, or eighth grade, that student has to go to their home school, but their sophomore, who's going to be a junior, can stay.
Do you find that the parents would prefer that all of their children stay in district?
Not having been the high school guy, it is, I mean, transitionally, if you do the research, transitionally, I think it should be the time when you do it. So whether it's in Hanson, whether it's like fifth into sixth, and then they go to the middle school at their school, at their hometown, you know, I don't know if it would be, you could do whatever way you want, but I think transitionally, it's best if you do it at the year before they would leave, you know, let them finish out that year and then start in another at their home school. Because a lot of kids, you have to get your own transportation. So now you're asking a parent on school choice, my school, my fourth grader now has to be in another town for 8:20, my high school person has to be in a town for 7:05, and I have to be at work somewhere, you know? So, I mean, it's worked the way we've had it. I think if you want to change it, I would say open it up for maybe one year at the eighth grade just so that they could then finish eighth grade and come to the high school where it's a full program already, but then I think look at it next year to say is, how did that work and do we want to, you know, do you want to?
How about if we did this, Judge? Seeing as the superintendent and the assistant superintendent run this district, how about if these special circumstances come up, that we allow the discretion of the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to make a decision on a family that gets moved or displaced to fix these problems? Is that where we were going?
Well, if they're displaced, McKinney-Vento, we automatically have to, they're automatically coming with us. But if the family moves itself, I mean.
But under that McKinney-Vento, when they're, if they're displaced, that's different, if they're homeless. But we've had, we've had, had the ability to have a, have a school choice student who has moved out of district and been placed in foster care in another community and then has had that adoption take place, who have been able to choice that student in at the high school. That can happen in the elementaries, but as far as you, if you open it up to give us that discretion, to be able to offer that to a parent, and the parent can either accept or decline choice, they might take it for the rest of that year and then carry one more year, but it's up to that parent. Right now, I don't have that ability to offer that parent that. So what you're saying, Mr. Hayes, is if you open that up and give us the ability to offer that parent for at least that end of year or the next calendar year, that we're choice for residents who then move out cross grade level, gives us that ability to give that parent that choice.
And I think if the motion talked, said administration, it would be better than just the both of us because, principals know the family situation dynamic better than.
They could have a good conversation.
Yeah.
And the question is, would you feel comfortable with just that remainder of the school year and the following year or till graduation?
I would say, open it up for that parent to make that choice.
Yeah.
You know, because a parent might say, I do love Indian Head and I do love Hanson Middle School and I do love the high school and I'll make that commitment of driving that kid back and forth, you know, or, or something like that.
They've already, they already have a seat.
Yeah.
They're already up to date with the curriculum.
Correct, correct. And it would be revenues for that school to be used on that school only. So it wouldn't be spread across, just like the high school has revenue, those revenues come here and it pays for six some odd teachers here. That might be an avenue.
Yeah.
If you have six kids at Indian Head that choice in, or seven kids or eight kids, that's a teacher, you know? So we could.
It gives the opportunity for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to look over exactly the, because I can see other situations falling into a disciplinary problem, changing this whole thing and somebody saying, I want this for this particular reason. And you guys know more about it.
Yep.
Than this committee knows if you had to bring it to us. Done?
I didn't realize we could open up choice to lower grades just for that reason, for our existing district kids. I thought choice was, had to be, if we opened it up, it had to be open to all residents. So I think that's a great idea that you're putting forward. I didn't realize that option was there just to retain our existing.
This committee can speculate or commit to, if you wanted to add one student at Indian Head for school choice, you know, or two or three. What I'm saying is adding students by choice would be 20 and 20, grades nine and 10, and then all existing residents who move out have the opportunity to remain within our district as school choice.
I would make that motion.
I would second.
Made and seconded. Does everybody understand what the motion is?
Read the motion.
That school choice remains as it is right now for ninth and 10th grade here at the high school.
21st per grade.
New students.
Okay, new students.
Yeah.
And then they continue on until they graduate, as well as any current Whitman or Hanson resident, that the child is attending a Whitman or Hanson Public School.
K through A.
Or Whitman-Hanson District Regional School.
Yeah.
Our district, that if they move and they want their child to remain in the school as a member of school choice, they're therefore eligible and they are able to stay within their school and go up through the grades and ultimately graduate Whitman-Hanson as a resident as a school choice pupil. So that means that the parents are responsible for their transportation.
Is that what you're putting it at the discretion of?
Their money's on you. All right, so I have the motion and a second. Does everybody understand it now?
And providing they, providing they pass the criteria of the superintendent.
At the discretion of.
Does everybody understand the motion and the second? Any further discussion on school choice?
That was as long as it's their discretion.
Yes, at their discretion, just make sure that's in there, Michelle, if we can.
It passes their, as they get to interview currently.
Thank you, Michelle.
Everybody understand what the motion is?
Yes.
Voting on. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. I entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing for school choice.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Strategic plan.
Then what happens?
George, briefly. Is this long?
Nope.
Strategic plan is currently being worked on. There are members of the district, they have outreach, the principals have outreach to their staffs and their school, their PACs and their school improvement committees. We will have something for you, and this will be hopefully finished by the end of March, now that we're having school committee meetings every week. You'll be able to look at it and see it and we'll hopefully adopt the vote for the next three years. Embedded in that is the SOA, which is the Student Opportunity Act, which is the three-year district plan that we have, and we are also moving forward with that.
Let's do what, April 1st?
Let's do April 1st, so at one of the 17 meetings in March, we'll take a moment and we'll have that vote also. Yeah, that's all I have for that.
Okay, so you're coming back to us?
Oh, yeah, we'll come back.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, Capitol Project warrant articles in your packet. You'll see there are several Capitol Project warrant articles. The first one is Whitman Middle feasibility study, see if the town will approve a million dollars borrowing. I entertain a motion to accept as written.
So moved.
Second.
And just.
Discussion.
Additional information, the facilities subcommittee did vote unanimously on all the articles to go forward to be placed on the warrant.
Okay, this is the first one, the Whitman Middle School feasibility study, as written in your packet. I have a motion in the second. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. The next one written in your packet starts with Duval and Conley Schools. Duval Elementary School and Duval Elementary School and another Duval Elementary School, that's, four articles and one of them is split up with Conley. I entertain a motion to accept as written.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? These are articles to be placed on the warrant to be voted. The next one's the town of Whitman, Duval and Conley Elementary, Regional High School, and another one for the Regional High School. I entertain a motion to accept as written in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
For discussion, all of these articles will, at least on the Whitman end, go to the capitals and facilities subcommittee or committee that they have. Well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Next one's town of Hanson, Indian Head and Hanson Middle, Indian Head and Hanson Middle, Regional High School and Regional High School, as presented in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Again, these are articles that are going to be placed on the town meeting, town, annual town meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Acceptance of gifts. I don't believe we have any gifts. Field trips. I have a field trip. It's Key Club is going on April 3rd to April 5th to Springfield, Mass for the Key Club District Education Conference. 10 to 20 students approximately. They are asking that they don't need a school nurse because emergency personnel are on site. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Warrant, subcommittee, I have one warrant dated the minutes of February 12, 2000, excuse me, 2020, I entertain a motion to accept.[1761.44]
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, I don't believe is met, has, has met. Have they? They did?
No, no, no.
No. Okay. Yeah, there is, there is a, an update coming up.
Yes.
Yeah, Matt Wallow got a series of updates that we.
Not really.
Yeah.
Do we know who's on the policy subcommittee? Okay. Will you notify them, Michelle, and have a meeting set? Okay.
So that's your first reading that you got in the packet.
Okay. Okay. All right. Facilities and Capitol, I know had a meeting earlier.
Pretty much heard it. Uh, the only other thing that I'd add on real quick is, uh, did reach out to Allison Sullivan. Her and Senator Brady, Representative Senator Brady's office, uh, came out to us, uh, last week.
Excuse me.
To, uh, address the Duval roof. Uh, basic issue is we were told to file a statement of interest on accelerated grant back in 2015, 16. Uh, we were told we were ineligible even though they told us to do that because of the 20-year clawback. It's now 20 years. Uh, so we prepared the, uh, accelerated grant, went to file it again, and now instead of being 20 years, it's 27 years. So I went crying to our state reps to see if there's anything that we can do. Uh, they were, uh, both sympathetic, both took information, and both are going to look into see if there's anything at all that we can, that they can do to try and help us out.
We actually had a meeting. I was there, you were there. Allison Sullivan came, Brady's assistant came.
Yep.
And there was pretty lively discussion about that roof project.
Yep.
Because all of us have been involved for a while on that.
Yeah.
And, um, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So that, uh, that's that in a nutshell.
Anybody have any questions for Fred?
Was there any discussion from Whitman as far as if nothing comes of that with Dr. Sullivan and Senator Brady about Whitman, you know?
Uh, it wasn't the proper time and place. Frank was there, uh, in that meeting as well, Frank Lindum, uh, you know, was there from Whitman. You know, that's more something that'll end up going from that facilities committee that Whitman has and bounce up the chain with Ernie. But, you know, got to try this first.
Yeah.
But one of the articles, one of the articles was also.
One of the articles was for a hundred thousand dollars.
Set aside as a placeholder periodically if things need to be done before the clawback, because the clawback can get changed at any, every year.
Right. That's for the Band-Aid repairs.
Correct.
Here and there to help with that, alleviate those.
Mitigate any damages that we come by.
It would be good to have the full thing repaired, too.
That'd be good.
Pilgrimage collaborative, there is no report. Mr. Boyce, uh, okay. We need to have an executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual or discuss discipline or dismissal of our complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual.
Before we get to that.
Don't answer it, John.
Well, I need a motion to go into executive. Go ahead before we.
Before we get into.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I thought I heard you said we were going to, um, vote on who was going to represent us in that regional agreement committee?
Thank you.
And I'd like to volunteer.
Attaboy.
We need.
Yeah, the rack.
Hold off on my executive session discussion for a second here, because you're right, Chris. I, and you guys asked me and I moved on by. Um, who'd like to be on the Hanson side of the, um, regional agreement committee?
Chris will.
Chris?
It's not Robbie O'Callaghan. We know that.
If you can't make it, I will sit in on it. Everybody okay with that? Who in the Whitman? Anybody else?
I mean, that's fine. And if Chris can't make it, I'll be an alternate if you want.
I have no issues. Is everybody good to that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, Chris?
Chris.
Chris?
And Chris.
And if they get tied up.
Well, I'm Fred.
Is everybody okay with that? We don't need to vote on, I'm just doing, we're appointing. Okay. Do I have to read the executive session? I'm entertaining a motion to go executive session for exactly what I just told you a moment ago.
So moved.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, everyone. When we come out of executive session, we will not be taking any votes other than to adjourn.
Well, I'm running to the ladies and we'll be back in like.
Go ahead.